Clerk Stotler is on the call.
Okay.
So hurry your ready, Madam President.
Okay. It is now 7:02 and I will call the meeting to order. Can I please get a roll call?
I show six councilors present virtually and the President is physical, so we have full attendance.
Thank you. I would like to ask that everyone please mute your phone and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, there are no special orders of the day and announcements, and there are no public hearings. So that takes us to the public comment.
Yes. We have reached the point on the agenda for citizens to speak to the council about issues that are coming before us or may come before us in the future. Council members may not act on any requests at this meeting, but may refer speaker to staff for assistance. We ask that you hold your comments to three minutes or less and refrain from personal attacks of any kind. Public comment is a courtesy and we expect everyone to conduct themselves in a civil manner. Speakers are asked to complete a public comment form or submit an email prior to the meeting. Madam Clerk, were there any public comments submitted prior to the meeting?
I did not receive any public comment prior to this meeting.
Are there any members of the public that submitted a form to address the council this evening? Are there any other members, another call, that did not sign up that wish to address the council this evening? Are there any other members of the public wishing to address the council this evening? If so, please come forward at this time. Public comment is now closed.
Item six is the consent agenda. All items listed under the consent agenda are considered routine and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member so request, in which event the item will be removed from the general order of business and considered at this point on the agenda.
Would any council like anything removed from the consent agenda?
Nancy Forbeck, I would like 6K to be removed.
And it's so noted? Can I please have a motion to approve the consent agenda, including it was 6A through 6J and 6L? Is there a motion at this time?
Yes, ma'am, I so move.
Move? Moved by Counselor Blakely, is there a second?
Second, Nancy Forbeck.
Okay, and it was seconded by Counselor Forbeck. At this time, there is a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Are there any questions or discussion? I will ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Vice President Anderson.
Aye.
Counselor Blakely.
Aye.
Counselor Forbeck.
Aye.
Counselor Keys.
Aye.
Counselor Levy.
Aye.
Counselor Pruschel.
Aye.
President Duncan.
Aye.
That motion carries unanimously, takes us back to item 6K, which is a referral to Plan Commission, an application for a conditional use permit to allow a pickup window in a C-3 commercial, community commercial district for the Beloit Public Library property located at 605 Eclipse Boulevard.
At this time, City Manager Luther will provide information for that. Oh, first, I think what we should do first is we'll take a motion. How about we do a motion and a second on that? So can I please have a motion to approve item 6K, please?
Nancy Forbeck, I so move.
Moved by Counselor Forbeck, is there a second?
Mark Pruschel, I will second.
Second by Counselor Pruschel. At this time, City Manager Luther, would you please provide an overview?
Thank you. This item is a referral to the Plan Commission for the Beloit Public Library to allow a pickup window, providing accommodations to limit the spread of COVID-19. The library currently has three book return slots on the south side of their existing building. As shown in the application materials and the attachments to the packet that are also available online, their proposal is to convert one of the book return slots into a pickup window to be used by customers who have reserved their books in advance. The affected portion of the site is already designed for drive-through functionality and includes five stacking spaces as shown on the proposed site plan. This project is distinct from the other renovations that are taking place at the library and upon referral, it will be heard by the Plan Commission on August 19th and would likely return to the city council for a public hearing and possible action on September 8th. I'd be happy to respond to any other questions you might have.
And I will go down and get input from councilors, please. I'll go down the row, beginning with Vice President Anderson. Do you have any questions or discussion on the motion?
No, I do not.
Thank you. Counselor Blakely, do you have any questions or discussion on the motion?
I'll just say that I think it's a great convenience, an idea for a great convenience for library patrons. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Forbeck, do you have any questions or discussion on the motion?
Yes. The reason I wanted it removed is I think it's so important when we have city services getting even more customer-friendly that we are able to distinguish this. This is an excellent move. Just again, more convenience for senior citizens or anybody who needs this kind of pickup. Very pleased about it. Thank you.
Counselor Keys, do you have any questions or discussion on the motion?
No questions.
Counselor Levy, do you have any questions or discussion on the motion?
No, I don't.
Counselor Pruschel, do you have any questions or discussion on the motion?
No, I don't.
At this time, there is a motion and a second to approve 6K. I will ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Vice President Anderson.
Aye.
Counselor Blakely.
Aye.
Counselor Forbeck.
Aye.
Counselor Keys.
Aye.
Counselor Levy.
Aye.
Counselor Pruschel.
Aye.
President Duncan.
Aye.
That motion carries unanimously. Item seven, under licenses, 7A is consideration of Resolution 2020-133, approving a Class B beer and Class B liquor intoxicating liquor license for the Beloit Club LLC, doing business as Iron Works Golf Lab, located at 625 Third Street, Jeffrey Whiteman Agent.
And... Clerk Stotler, do you have any other report to provide from the ABLCC?
Just to tell the councilor a little update. So they received their beer license when they opened three years ago, just under three years ago. And they had wanted a full liquor license at that time. And so when we get to annual license renewals, I get a lot of inquiry. And this was the first complete application for the liquor license that became available due to Clarabows not renewing and not selling. So that is what freed up this full liquor license for the golf lab. And so they look forward to expanding their possibilities there on premise. And Jeff, I believe, was going to be in if anybody had questions. For him, he was going to be calling in on the public line. But ABLCC did recommend this unanimously at their last week's meeting.
Thank you, Clerk Stotler. At this time, can I have a motion to approve the resolution, please?
Nancy Forbeck, I so move.
Moved by Counselor Forbeck, is there a second?
Anderson will second.
Second by Vice President Anderson. And then now I'll go down the list of councilors. Vice President Anderson, do you have any questions or discussion on the motion?
No, I do not.
Counselor Blakely, do you have any questions or discussion on the motion?
No, thank you.
Counselor Forbeck, do you have any questions or discussion on the motion?
No, thanks.
Counselor Keys, do you have any questions or discussion on the motion?
I do not, thank you.
Counselor Levy, do you have any questions or discussion on the motion?
No, I do not.
Counselor Pruschel, do you have any questions or discussion on the motion?
Just, I might have missed it. How many licenses are now available once this is passed?
So that is the only one that became available as of July 1st. And so there will be no regular liquor licenses available for the Class B beer and liquor.
So they're all taken again?
So they're all taken again.
I thought that in my head, but I just don't remember if I read that or not. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Pruschel. At this time, there is a motion and a second to approve the resolution. I will ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Vice President Anderson.
Aye.
Counselor Blakely.
Aye.
Counselor Forbeck.
Aye.
Counselor Keys.
Aye.
Counselor Levy.
Aye.
Counselor Pruschel.
Aye.
President Duncan.
Aye.
And that passes unanimously. Under item eight, there are no ordinances moving us to item nine, which is appointments. And I'll spare you the long reading because there is only one this evening. And it is to the Board of Appeals. It is David G. Baker, replacing Merlin Basson, to a term ending May 31st, 2022.
Thank you, Clerk Stotler. At this time, can I entertain a motion to approve the appointments, please?
This is Mark, I'll make the motion.
Okay, motion by Counselor Pruschel, is there a second?
This is Sherry.
Second by Counselor Blakely, any discussion? I will ask the clerk to call the roll, please.
Vice President Anderson.
Aye.
Counselor Blakely.
Aye.
Counselor Forbeck.
Aye.
Counselor Keys.
Aye.
Counselor Levy.
Aye.
Counselor Pruschel.
Aye.
President Duncan.
Aye.
That passes unanimously and we are now in the council activities and upcoming events.
At this time, we'll begin with councilors. And if you like, councilors, you can also share some of your committee meetings as we go down the list. We'll begin with Vice President Anderson, please.
Thank you, Madam President. No report from committees since we just approved the things from my committees. But as far as things that have happened or things that we should be aware of, I was volunteering at the Beloit Farmers Market and I just want to thank those that attend who have been very much respectful. I know at the beginning it was a little confusing and challenging, but I really appreciate everybody masking up and being as respectful as they possibly can. So thank you for doing that. Just a couple things I wanted to highlight is, one, I'm sure Lori Stotler appreciates this, we do have a great need for poll workers. I was so excited, I asked her about it and I hope everyone else who is under the age of 65 will join me in helping out the polls. I don't know how many we need exactly, but I know it's probably a very large number. So if you have some time available and you can help us run a smooth election in person, that'd be great. That's desperately needed. Lastly, just give a plug for committees. That's another way to get involved. It's very minimal time commitment, just one meeting a month and just maybe a couple hours at most of prep work, reading the agenda packet. We need a lot of people from different backgrounds and different experiences to get involved. So, you know, instead of us having people complaining on the sidelines, let's fill out applications, let's help with the polls, let's get involved in our community. So that's my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice President Anderson. Counselor Blakely.
I only have to say that the committees I'm on are meeting actively online. We had the Municipal Library Foundation meeting last week. We have the Library Board meeting this week. And tomorrow evening is Landmarks Commission. They're very efficient meetings, so keep those in mind if you are looking to volunteer. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Blakely. Counselor Forbeck.
Really, my only report is I'm looking forward to the August Equal Opportunities Commission virtual meeting. So I think we're going to be having lots on our agenda. And the other thing is I'm afraid I'm being sort of boring, really hunkering at home and getting through this COVID-19. Thanks.
Thank you, Counselor Forbeck. Counselor Keys.
So the Parks and Rec and Conservation Commission met last Wednesday. There was minimal, not too much as far as new business, but the staff report highlighted all the positive efforts of our staff with the opening, safe opening of the Kruger Pool and with the implementation of the different precautions to minimize the spread of COVID-19. And so I just want to highlight that we do require the reservations and that since the pools opened, we've had about a 90% fill rate. So I really feel that the pool has been utilized by the community and I want to thank everybody involved. Also, it was brought to my attention that there'll be two area outdoor active events. So WELTI Rock River 5K will be virtual 5K happening now through September 7th. And those funds support the State Line Environmental Education. And the goal is to have the participants cover the distance equal to the length of the Rock River. So that's a fun way to safely get involved. More information can be found at the WELTI Center's Facebook site or website. And then the Rock River, the Rock Trail Coalition has a virtual 5K or walk, August 22nd through September 12th, and a bike time trial event September 12th in Afton. And so this is a fundraiser to help with further completion of the Peace Trail. And so I strongly believe exercise is medicine and I encourage everyone to get outside and take advantage of our beautiful parks and/or these events. And as far as a counselor update, this last Saturday was the Hackett Neighborhood Clip and Drug Takeback that was sponsored by Community Action, Youth to Youth, and Beloit Area Crime Stopakers. And I had the opportunity to volunteer as part of, with Beloit Clogging and to help just pick up around the neighborhood. And so that was another great event run within the community. So thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Keys. Counselor Levy.
Nothing.
Counselor Pruschel.
I just want to add there, Brittany, that I believe this weekend is the Merrill Neighborhood cleanup or was that two weekends ago?
Madam President, may I respond?
Yes, she may respond. Thank you, Counselor Keys.
That was two weekends ago. I have reached out to the head of Community Action and Beloit Clogging will be partnering with them to set up an event in the Merrill Neighborhood. So there'll be another small event, but the official cleanup was two weekends ago. Thank you.
Okay. I missed that one, thank you. I visited Big Hill Park this last week and on Riverside, biking both ways, I noticed that the, I call it the switchback trail. It's a portion of the Peace Trail has been repaired and the washout has been nicely repaired. I don't know how bad it looked when it was washed out because I didn't see it then. But that looks good, everything's rideable there. It looks like they're getting the trail ready for paving on the, on that last segment there. And the Riverwalk at the Powerhouse is proceeding very, very well. Almost tempted to take a little walk over it, see what it feels like, but I'll wait a little bit yet. Anyway, so it's looking good. The river's looking good. I guess they're about to start on the retainer wall, retaining wall repairs along the Brown Swiss there too. So everybody take care and be safe. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Pruschel. And now my report, I'll try to be as brief as I can. I want to acknowledge again that the year 2020 marks the 100th anniversary of the passage of the 19th Amendment, guaranteeing and protecting women's constitutional rights to vote. This historic centennial, which begins August 26th, 2020, offers an unparalleled opportunity to commemorate democracy and to explore its relevance to the issues and equal rights today. So let's celebrate that. Next, my council activities have included attending the Appointment Review Committee meeting, Rock County Task Force meeting, and Al Fresco on Grand. So lots of virtual meetings and events. That said, I want to thank each person that participated in Regina Duncan Day, giving to family promise, a vital agency that assists our homeless population. Also, a special heartfelt thanks to Beloit Health System, Culvers, and Josh and Bill Locke for all their help in raising funds. Together, we raised nearly $3,000. You all rock. I also want to give a shout out to our Beloit Police Department officers. Kelly, these are Officer Kelly, Doherty, Driscoll, Munez, Jones, and Glass for all their work in locating an elderly woman that was missing during last Monday's horrible storm. And I'm sorry, I hope you can understand my pronunciation. It's mass, you can't hear, you can't speak. Thank you, officers, for your service. Beloit's finest doesn't skip a beat. Also, I just want to mention that I was saddened to hear about the passing of Arnie Lee. Arnie was a true leader in our community and our hearts go out to his wife Marcia and their family during this difficult time. He is gone but will not be forgotten. And in closing, I want to remind everyone to please go to the city of Beloit website to look at our committee vacancies. Because we have a long meeting tonight, I won't go through those. And I would also like to remind you to please take the safety precautions necessary to stop the spread of COVID-19 and please mask up. Next, item 11, the city manager's presentation.
Thank you.
City Manager Luther, will you please provide us with a brief report and update?
Based on information provided from Rock County Health Department, trends in Rock County and the city of Beloit proper are improving in regard to COVID-19 infection rates and test positivity rates. Beloit does have an 8% positivity test rate over the course of the past week, which is still higher than we would like to see. Optimally, that percentage would drop below 5%, more in keeping with the percentages seen for Rock County as a whole and the state of Wisconsin in total. However, across the country and the world, we are learning that face covering requirements combined with social distancing are in fact effective at slowing the spread of COVID-19 and reducing the severity of illness. In our own workplace, while we have had a third individual test positive for COVID-19, there was no exposure to the public at large. The face covering requirement for our employees also prevented what likely would have been a large number of employees needing to be quarantined. So that's helping us maintain essential staffing levels. In addition to our continued response to COVID-19, major economic development projects throughout the city continue. The Amazon Distribution Center is open. And while they have already met their commitment to 500 employees, they are still hiring. ABC Riverbin Stadium is under construction. The Beloit Powerhouse Riverwalk is nearing completion. And the build out to accommodate Blackhawk Technical College and their presence at the Beloit Public Library is substantially complete. Visit Beloit is moving forward to renovate the former St. Paul's on the Riverfront, our Angel Museum property. And new residential developments, including the Wright and Wagner Lofts, are all underway. So while we may be having challenges in dealing with the impact of COVID-19, economic development is booming in Beloit. That concludes my report for the evening.
Thank you.
Under item, under item 12, did you have something more, Madam President?
No, go ahead, Clerk Stotler.
Okay, okay. There are three items for closed session pursuant to Section 1985 Sub 1E. And they are to consider the potential sale of 202 Maple Avenue, 1500 Shore Drive in the northern portion of 1459 Sixth Street. The second item is to consider a possible settlement of Woodman's Food Market versus the city of Beloit. And then the third one is to consider a possible settlement with the Wisconsin Department of Natural Resources in the matter of exceedance of the combined radium maximum contaminant level in the city of Beloit, Rock County. And the city council may reconvene into open session to take action on these matters discussed in closed session.
To clarify, the council may be adjourning pursuant to Section 19.85 1 Sub E and 1 Sub G.
Thank you, City Manager Luther. Is there a motion at this time to go into closed session?
Forbeck, I so move.
Moved by Counselor Forbeck, is there a second?
Counselor Keys will second.
Okay, second by Counselor Keys. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries, we are now in closed session. Okay. Okay, the council is now back in open session. So we will take a motion on each item, but afterwards, if staff could just give a brief presentation after each one. We'll begin with the first one. Is there a motion to approve the sale of 202 Maple Avenue, 1500 Shore Drive, and the northern portion of 1459 Sixth Street? I will entertain a motion at this time.
Nancy Forbeck, I so move.
Moved by Counselor Forbeck, is there a second?
I will second that.
Second by Counselor Pruschel. Is there any discussion? Before we move forward, I would like to have staff just give a brief overview for our public so they can get information and updated on our discussion.
Thank you. This resolution is to approve an offer to purchase between the city of Beloit and State Line Boys and Girls Club. And this is for properties located at roughly 202 Maple, 1500 Shore Drive, and a portion of 1459 Sixth Street. This agreement is to have that land transaction occur for a dollar, but there is a strong repurchase agreement that protects the city in case for some reason, the Boys and Girls Club was not able to move forward to construct their new facility. We think that is a highly unlikely occurrence, but we do have that language included in the offer to purchase. And with this approval, I would have the authority to execute that offer on behalf of the city. And we would then move forward in supporting the Boys and Girls Club in their effort for a capital campaign to construct a new building.
Thank you very much, City Manager Luther. We have a first by Counsel Forbeck, a second by Counsel Pruschel. Is there any further discussion? Hearing, none. I will ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Vice President Anderson.
Aye.
Counselor Blakely.
Aye.
Counselor Forbeck.
Aye.
Counselor Keys.
Aye.
Counselor Levy.
Aye.
Counselor Pruschel.
Aye.
President Duncan.
Aye.
That passes unanimously.
Next, we'll move on to the next motion. Is there a motion? Is there a motion to approve a resolution authorizing a settlement of Woodman's Food Market Incorporated versus City of Beloit? Can I have a motion, please?
Nancy Forbeck, I still move.
Moved by Council Forbeck. Is there a second?
Councilor Prushel, I second.
Second by Councilor Prushel. And before we move forward, I would like for us to get a brief staff report for the public, please.
Madam President, I'm here to discuss the settlement of the City of Beloit versus Woodman's lawsuit regarding their tax assessments. The city is currently in litigation for three years' worth of the tax assessments, 2017, 2018, and 2019. The assessed value of the property was $14,598,700 in each of those three years. Woodman's objected to the assessment, claiming the value to be about $11 million. We have reached a proposed settlement that's before you that establishes the 2017 and 2018 assessments at $14 million even, and the 2019 assessment at $13,750,000. This proposed settlement results in a refund of approximately $59,061.24. The city's portion of that settlement amounts to $23,183.39. At this time, I would ask approval of the resolution to settle these matters.
Thank you very much. We have a first and a second. Who made the first? It was Counselor, was that Counselor Forbeck?
Mm-hmm.
Counselor Forbeck, I'm sorry, moved the motion. It was seconded by Counselor Prushel. Is there any discussion at this time? Hearing, none. I will ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Vice President Anderson.
Aye.
Councilor Blakely.
Aye.
Councilor Forbeck.
Aye.
Councilor Keys.
Aye.
Councilor Levy.
Aye.
Councilor Prushel.
Aye.
President Duncan.
Aye.
That passes unanimously.
Next, is there a motion to approve a resolution to approve a settlement with the Wisconsin Department of Natural Resources in the matter of exceedance of the combined radium maximum contaminant level in the City of Beloit, Rock County, Wisconsin? Can I have a motion, please?
Councilor Keys, still move.
Moved by Councilor Keys. Is there a second?
Vice President Anderson, I'll second.
Thank you, Vice President Anderson. At this time, before we move any further, let's have a staff report, please, at this time.
Thank you, Council President Duncan. The Wisconsin Department of Natural Resources issued a consent order for the City of Beloit due to a violation of the Safe Drinking Water Act for entry point nine, and that consent order was designed to bring that well back into compliance, and while the city was not absolutely obligated, we did choose to immediately take that well out of service when the high test result was received. No negative impact to the health, safety, or welfare of the public was experienced, but we have been evaluating options to bring that well back into compliance, and based on that information, the city does agree with the findings of fact and conclusions of law and the details within the consent order. This resolution would give me the authorization to sign and accept that agreement.
Thank you, City Manager Luther. We, it's been moved, the motion's been moved by Counselor Keys, seconded by Vice President Anderson. Is there any discussion? Hearing, none. I will ask the clerk to call the roll.
Vice President Anderson.
Aye.
Councilor Blakely.
Aye.
Councilor Forbeck.
Aye.
Councilor Keys.
Aye.
Councilor Levy.
Aye.
Councilor Prushel.
Aye.
President Duncan.
Aye.
That passes unanimously.
At this time, I will now, at this time, I will now accept a motion to adjourn, please.
Councilor Keys, I still move.
Okay, it's been moved by Counsel Forbeck. Is there a second?
Councilor Keys will second.
Seconded by Counselor Keys. Any discussion? Hearing, none. With all in favor, please say aye.
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 That said, we are now adjourned, and this ends our city council meeting for this evening. Thank you.
All right, everybody.
Good night, everybody.
Good night.
Good night.